Okay, we called.
Okay. I'll call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, November 18th, 2021. Called order, roll call, John Ballas.
Here.
Douglas Dunn, here. Sandy Housman is excused. Nancy Piranha.
Here.
Jennifer Ryan.
Here.
Michael Smitsir.
Here.
Mike Ablyn. Lewis Pollack, our council liaison.
Here.
And Doug Taylor, Staff Liaison.
Yeah.
We'll call to the public, is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item other than is on our agenda? We'll go then to Agenda Item 1, which is Review Discussion and Possible Approval of the Language for Accessory Dwelling Units, ADUs. Doug, would you want to give us some background here?
Sure. I hope that you've all had a chance to read the proposed article that we put together. I want to thank Sandy for being a great help in putting some of the writing together. I also want to thank Joe Ward for his help in crafting this article. Essentially, I put this pretty close to this kind of language before you, in the last meeting. I think it was the last meeting, yeah. And one thing that I had tried to do was incorporate affordability into it. I feel that's important. If you don't mind, I'd like to touch on that item first. The affordability, as you all know probably, that short-term rentals are not prohibited and cannot be prohibited by city authority at this time. Now, there is a bill before the Arizona Legislature that will limit short-term or allow the limiting of short-term rentals, i.e. Airbnb. I did a lot of research on how ADUs, if you don't mind me abbreviating it, can help affordability. And I put a little bullet, some bullet points together from various sources. I think Tucson did a really great job in addressing that because they, you know, they're in Arizona and they can't limit the short-term rentals. But if you don't mind, I'll go through the bullet points. The, there's three primary ones, that the rent tends to be generally less than other rental options. The supply effect, which is the increase in supply as neighborhoods have more rental housing. There's a decrease in demand and therefore a lower rental price or cost. Also, we've held this maximum square footage for an ADU to 600 square feet. And this less square footage can equal lower rent. I've also added, since you last saw it, a sunset a number of five years, that we will then be able to review the goals and see if they've been met. We can either let it stand, modify, or terminate it. And from a city planning standpoint, this is a, having ADUs in a, the neighborhoods that are already residential neighborhoods will give us a better return on our dollar spent by the city. We have, we already have infrastructure in those neighborhoods. We have streets, sewers, utilities, et cetera. And it just makes more sense to use something we already have rather than spending new money like we would do in a planned unit development or an affordable housing plan, you know, like multi-residences. So I think it does do us a good service for extending the ability to households to encourage flexibility of lifestyle, family, employees, people who are nurses or as we age out. And I think it contributes to affordability. So I did put in, because there would, I thought there might be some confusion. So that's the end of the affordability portion of it. But I did add in the accessory dwelling definitions, that an ADU is a dwelling unit and not an accessory building as defined in Article 6.3.1 of this code. So that there's no confusion about this being essentially a shed or a sleeping room for kids or a shop or garage. So basically, that's the difference. There are a few, I hope you've read it, there are a few rewordings, but I feel like this is a pretty good article and I leave it to you.
Any comments from commissioners? Questions?
I had a question for Doug, a couple of questions for Doug.
Yeah.
Reading through it, it implies that the ADU is a separate unit? And we will require an additional sewer and trash team?
I, well, it will require being on the same trash and sewer as the primary resident, residents. The, it can be either, and you might see here that it's a, let's see, where is that? It can be 600 square feet or 40% of the gross floor area in the primary residence. It has to be, it has to be not, it has to be differentiated from the primary residence in size and look. Not necessarily style, but look. And that it, if it's in the same dwelling, it would be 40%. So if someone has a couple of bedrooms to rent or something like that, it would, essentially with a kitchenette.
Doug, you're muted again. We can't hear you, Doug.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, I feel like I'm in a telephone commercial. I didn't, I didn't see a a need to be concerned. And I did talk to the previous Director of DPW and I don't see a problem with this at this time. But that is why we can review it and, you know, and terminate it if need be at a later date. I also believe because there's a bill before the Arizona Legislature, that that may affect the viability of it in the future, and it may be even a better thing. So I think both of those can be revisited.
Other questions, comments?
I'd like to make a comment or a correction, Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
In Section C, the, an auxiliary dwelling unit may require approval. I think it should be more definite like that. I think it should be, shall have the approval of the P&amp;Z Board or the Planning Director, which would be you. You could give administrative approval if it fell within the guidelines. But may means not.
Right. And I put may in because this would, if it fit the lot coverage setbacks, all of that, that would be, they wouldn't have to come before zoning, they would have to.
But they would, I would think they would need to have your approval.
Well, that's fine. I can put that in.
So I think it needs to either have approval of the P&amp;Z and/or the Planning Director.
Yeah. And since I put must meet, I think that's, I think I, let's see, will require, how's that?
Yes.
Okay.
I just, today's world interprets may as it's your decision.
Yeah, you're right.
And we need to be a little bit more clear.
I agree.
And like I said, especially in Old Bisbee with the sign permits, very few of the sign permits went to DRB. Most of them were administrative approvals because they met the guidelines and the style. And that's why I said, you know, your approval, if you didn't feel comfortable with the approval, then you sit there and say, well, take it to the P&amp;Z.
Right, okay. And that, that quite often does happen when they go to Joe. He's lately, he's been sending them to me if they, not for ADU, but for anybody who's come comes in and may have to go before zoning, and then I can help them get through that process. So I will change that to will.
Other questions, questions or comments?
I, I have one. When I read it, did I understand correctly that the ADU must be different than the associated building? You, it says the style would be the same, but the way I read it would mean that it's painted differently or has a different appearance. Is that, I hope that's incorrect.
That is incorrect. It would have to be, if it's not inside the building, it would have to be different in that it is diminutive to the primary structure. And that's, that's all that we were trying to do is.
Oh, okay. So it can be painted like the main.
It can be exactly like, it's same details, all of that.
Thank you for clarifying.
Go on, Nancy.
Yeah, thank you. So if a, if there is a parcel in Old Bisbee that would, or used to have a home on it, right? So let's say that there's a parcel and then that property has the remnants of an old structure. And then a person buys that parcel and the parcels, and they build a, you know, a new home, a new construction appropriately. And then there's still enough room left over to do an ADU. You're saying that that's possible on the same set, the same sewer? Is that what I hear?
Yes, yeah. And, and the primary structure would have to be built first. It has to be lived in by the, by the primary owner of the property. And the ADU would have to meet all the zoning issues. Yes, it could be on the same utilities, it could, you know, it could, whatever, the sewer, it will share essentially. And, and you know, it won't be on the, running to the house, but it would, it would share the same sewer line coming off the property. Unless the, and this, I, you know, I don't know of a case, but if this were indeed insufficient to do this, to add another bathroom on this property because of the size of the sewer or the age of the sewer, then that would have to be dealt with. But in, in general, they should be able to use the same sewer.
Okay. And then, because I did sell a parcel up on Quality Hill and the people aren't ready to build yet, but the, the main, the sewer main is already tapped out. So in order for these people to build, and I'm talking about, of course, we're talking about Old Bisbee as opposed to other parts of 85603.
Right.
The, when the people choose to build, it looks like that they're going to actually have to somehow take the extra expense of going to a further connection that is not tapped out. So the one that's close to their house, because that sewer has not been utilized in about 70, 60, almost 65 years. All of the other laterals are already, they're already at capacity. And I'm just, so I just keep on revisiting that one in my head because I'm saying if there's one, I just don't think that that's, I don't think that that's going to be the lone wolf out there. I could be wrong, but I know that I sold at least one parcel like that. And then my other question is, is how do we, how do we know or enforce if the people are there for 70% of the time? How do we do that?
Well, that is, both of those are good questions. With the sewer, I believe that the sewer lateral would have to be improved before this would be approved. So before an ADU on that property would be approved. So that is the, this does not relieve the owner of the property from building more on the property than, than it can handle. And then from the second one, I'm sorry, what was the second one?
Yeah, the second one is how do we enforce or who will be enforcing if a person is living there 70% of the year?
Right. And that, I don't know that that's enforceable. That is the, that gives them, I think, four months off from, you know, like, let's say they leave for the summer or something. But it does allow, I think, snowbirds to, or people who use this as a, I don't know if that's a snowbird, but somebody who uses this as their primary residence location could still, you know, have a place, you know, in, I don't know, in Canada or New England or something, you know, so that it gives them an ability to take an extended time in another place. But it, I don't, at this time, I don't want to say that it's, it could be enforceable because it's in the, in the article. But at this time, I don't believe we have the enforcement capability. Now, maybe they could sign a, something that would say they would be there, but to know that they were there that whole time would be a tough one.
Doug?
Yes.
So that would preclude the primary residence from being an Airbnb?
Correct, I believe so.
I think that's the question you were asking, Nancy, wasn't it?
Um, well, that was part of the, yeah, that was kind of part of it. But the, the other part of it is, for example, if I, like, you know, if I go home once I retire, if I go to Pennsylvania for four months out of the year, and how would you know if I'm gone 50% of the time, 60% of the time, 70%? Who's going to know?
Well, yeah, I, that could happen. I.
If all of a sudden, if all of a sudden you start listing on Airbnb that you got a place for rent for four months.
Right. Yeah. And I'm saying, that's, that's exactly, so it does, it does kind of feed into Airbnb. But I'm saying, who, who is going to be able to regulate, regulate that? Or who's going to be the occupancy police?
Yeah. And I, I don't see us in the business right now of occupancy police. And just to be frank, because it's, it, the logistics of that would take a full-time two people probably. And I don't think that's the nature of what we want to do. But I think it is the nature of what we want to do to encourage residents at this time. If it became a problem, it is in the article. But I would encourage residents to have this essentially as their full-time home. And they could travel, they could do whatever they wanted. And, you know, if they, if they were off by a couple of weeks or a month, maybe that's not a problem. And it might not be a problem at all, but I felt that it needed some hook at some point in time. If somebody complains about an absent landlord, they could lose their ability to rent that ADU. If they aren't, you know, if somebody says, well, I never see my landlord and I, you know, I have a leaky toilet or whatever it is, then, and they're indeed not there, they've been away. I, I'm not worried about the Airbnb portion of that question as much because it, you know, they could rent out their primary residence for anything for four months. It doesn't have to be Airbnb. Airbnb is usually, you know, a week or a few nights. But if they wanted to make money renting it out seasonally, let's say, you know, somebody wanted to be here in the spring and they wanted to go to, I don't know what, Mexico, then they, they could do that. And that's the intent, is to allow, allow them to not be there all the time. But also to not try to enforce any mandatory number other than the fact that we have it in there.
Right. So if we, so this, I'm just thinking about this logistically, you know, selfishly, like how this is also going to impact my, you know, my daily work as a Realtor. So if, if the homes were where the ADU was added, if the owner lived in there as a primary residence, you know, and we said 100% of the time, that doesn't mean that they have to be in there 100% of the time. They are, it has to be a, what I think we're trying to achieve is that it has to be a primary residence. Is that, is that the goal?
Yes.
Yeah. So I don't think we need to put in a percentage in there at all. If it's a primary residence, people can do whatever they want with their primary residence.
Right.
Now, where it becomes a nightmare for me, because I've actually had this happen and literally for the first time in my 18-year career as a real estate professional, my, I had a client who was actually denied the day before closing, the day before. And it was Chase who would not believe that this person who was living in Tucson, they did, and it was COVID and they were working virtually. Chase Bank would not believe that they were using this as their primary residence, which was absolutely correct, they were, because it had two dwellings on it. So they, instead of being able to obtain a primary home loan, they were forced to look at an investment property and had to put a minimum down of 25% because the, the actual parcel had already had another structure on there that three owners ago used it as like a, you know, like an extra bedroom for somebody. And my client was denied. So so if we have a primary residence and then, let's just say, a person chooses to put, to put an ADU on and then they want to list their property thinking that they're going to cash in with the, with the primary and then having an extra ADU on there, then it become, it doesn't become a primary residence. It, it becomes a logistical nightmare for the lending world. Because they, I, I just see that as, you know, if it, if it happens, it happens, you know, we can't do anything about it. But then it becomes an income-producing property instead of a primary residence for the owner.
All right. Were you talking about a, when they, when they are turned down? You're talking about the fact that they would want to sell the building and.
That's exactly what happened. So when my people who lived there for about 40 years, when they sold the property because they aged out of their situation, it took me an extremely long time and it took me actually three, three, three transactions to get it closed. And the last one was literally, we got to the end of the line. My person was supposed to close on, just say December 1st, let's make it up. On November 30th, they were actually denied their loan because they went out and they actually, the lender actually went to the MLS and saw that I marketed the property as having another dwelling on it. And even though they asked me to explain it, they asked my buyer to explain it, they asked everybody to explain it. They still would not believe the buyer. And it, it was really true. The buyer was not going to use that for anything, anything at all. And her loan was denied and she did not have the ability to come up with 25% for a new loan that was an investment or a, you know, and it considered an investment property.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know the case, but I, you know, I do know that people have, you know, for, forever had places in their homes for rent or, you know, come from the East Coast where everybody rents something in the summer along the beach. But yeah, that, I, I think that could happen. You know, I don't know how the, the banks judge the feasibility of a, of a primary owner. I would think you could be a primary owner and still rent out a room or rent out a unit. But I don't have any experience with that. So that very well may be a case.
Yeah, if it's an ancillary dwelling at all, even in Tucson, it is considered a income-producing property.
Well, that might be a problem.
Yeah, that's what I mean, is that something that, you know, might not be a problem for us in 2021 or 22 or 23. But as more people build these, and then they go to sell their property because they believe that they're adding square footage. And it, you know, in order for them, it to be considered usable square footage, it has to be heated and cooled. But if they're, if it's 600 feet and it is heated and cooled and it's its own separate structure with a kitchen and a bathroom, it is considered an income-producing property.
Right. And I would, I would think it should be. I, I'm actually a little surprised that, that they would think of it as a commercial endeavor rather than a subsidiary or some sort of contribution to the, the mortgage payment. But that's, you know, banks are different than me. So I totally get it that that could happen.
Yep. And then what we go back to is the people that are coming into Bisbee that absolutely have means, which my last five, I told you four earlier, it was actually, I revisited that. My last five transactions were all cash and all of them were well, well over, you know, the average $175,000, $180,000 house in Bisbee, you know. So now we have, if it's a, if it's a property that has a home and an ADU and no one can get a loan for it, and then it becomes not marketable as a primary residence, and then I have to market it as an income-producing property, then what it does is it just, it continues the problem of people being priced out of, especially Old Bisbee, where we can't find, I can't, you know, all of the people, I mean, not one of mine was a primary residence. And I can't even tell you the last time I sold a house that was a primary this year. It's November 18th. I can, they've all been not primary.
Wow. Yeah. And I don't really know what we could do to stem that. I mean, there is, when they're buying with cash, then it doesn't affect the sale if they, if they have a accessory dwelling on it. But yeah, I don't know how we could, I can't even, I was trying to brainstorm while you were, while you were speaking about it. And I, I don't have a solution for that. Does anybody have a solution for that?
And I, and I, you know, I know what we're trying to accomplish.
Right.
And it's not that I'm for or against anything right now, but I'm just saying, in my real-world occupation, it may be a temporary fix, but then if someone can't get a loan on it and they, we'll just make it up because we see it all over the state. Someone comes in from California, because that's the, that's, you know, the excuse, it's Airbnb and the Californians. That's, that's across the board, that's what people blame.
Right.
So whether it's Airbnb or California or some other thing that we haven't discovered yet, if someone comes in with $500,000 and they buy that, that primary because they're not getting a loan and there's an ancillary, you know, an ADU on it. And then the rent went from $450 for affordable housing to $850 for the same 600-square-foot structure. Then we now have a population of people that live and work in Old, specifically Old Bisbee. We've already added to the parking, we've already added to whether or not we're going to get the sewer fixed or if we get FEMA money, we're adding to the parking. And now the rents, it may take one, two, or three years, but then the rents are jacked up to $800 because it's. And now the rents, it may take one, two or three years, but then the rents are jacked up to eight hundred dollars because. It's a brand new six hundred square foot dwelling. And now we don't have people that can afford it again. So I, I mean, these are all just things that I wanna just. Throw out there because they're really things that I'm dealing with now and have been for about three and a half years.
And I think that's good because you have on the ground, boots on the ground experience. And I, you know, I was kind of. Going, I, I believe that because if people do it and that now if the banks stop them, that's a whole, a whole nother thing.
Right.
And I can't guess what their policies are, but if we had enough people building ADAs, ADUs rather. We would then, because of that, that supply effect, we would be lowering the rate. If, you know, the competition right now, I could build anything and rent it for anything. Because of the, the lack of, of housing, whether for rent, whether it was affordable or market rate. So I don't know, I guess if that, if banks are gonna put a, a, some sort of penalty on a, on a buyer. Then that may, that may. You know, that may happen. I, I don't know. And apparently it has from your experience. So.
Right.
I, I really don't know how we could stem that.
Right. And I'm just saying, you know, whether it is in Bisbee or in Phoenix. Which I lived in a historic neighborhood in Phoenix for, you know, on and off for twenty years. It's the same thing. No one can afford to live in the city core anymore of downtown Phoenix. And if you are, you're paying, the minimum rent down there is about, you know, fourteen hundred dollars. And you're, you're still in about eight hundred square feet. So all of the people are pushed. They're, they're just pushed to certain areas. And then they can ride the, the rail system in or they can do, but this is exactly, I mean, on a much smaller scale.
Right.
Where it happened in Phoenix and I've lived through it and I watched it. And I guess fortunately for me, I also benefited from selling my house down there. But now the same house, you know, that I sold. You know, now it's, it's beyond, it's, it's a thirteen hundred square foot house and it's, you know, almost five hundred thousand dollars, literally. So I just, I see this as, yes, it could be a temporary fix, but then. I mean, we're still in old Bisbee, we still have the advantage that we're landlocked everywhere around old Bisbee. And it's not so. Maybe lucrative to do it in another part of eight, five, six, zero, three. So at least we have the advantage of so much space in Bisbee.
Yeah. And we have, we have the density. I, I like to think of it as a little city. I wish we had a rail. But, or light rail or whatever, but. Yeah, those are all good points and, and really I don't have an answer for the bank one. I, I, I don't know about that.
Right.
Yeah, we're talking about, Mike, you were talking about section C and it talks about. Meeting current building code regulations. I have a friend and he, we're talking about California and there's a law passed over there called eight, eight, one. And it diminished, not diminished, but altered the building regu- the building codes. Had things like where the setbacks had been ten foot, then they became four. They made it easier to build these ADUs. I think with our existing building regulations, I think Southern are gonna be very restrictive. I think they're gonna stop some of this building that we're trying to encourage. I wonder if we need to talk to Joe. You said he's looked at this previously, but if you read that law, eight, eight, one. It took him about two years to put that together. And it's, has a lot of facets to it. It wasn't decided in ten days by a building and. A planning and zoning commission. There's a lot of intricacies to it, a lot of ins and outs. And I'm thinking we should table this because it's just too complex to, to give such an overly broad set of regulations right now. My concern about the building code is just one part of it. In the eight, eight, one law, they, they had separate entrances, they had required parking, they had covenants as to how many people could reside there. A lot of the things that maybe you think are overly restrictive, but. I think in that Maine, it encouraged the buildings that they wanted, it inclu- it encouraged the ADUs. And it made them a good housing stock. So as, as I think about this eight, eight, one compared to what we're looking at, there's a lot more to it, a lot more to it. I don't know if this is the end all be all right here, or this is gonna go on for further study, but it needs a lot more study. I think you made a really great start here, Mr. Taylor. I, I think it's a good way to get things going, but just in terms of building codes. The ones that we have are gonna restrict what people can do.
Well, and I would, the comment I have on that is our, our historic overlay district. Does affect setbacks and, you know, so there is, you know, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not defending it, but I'm just saying that we do have already something that changes our, our, you know, the basic. Built, you know, zoning code, which is our overlay district. And so, you know, it may be that this isn't the, the, the. Time in the historic district, I don't know, but I do know that the, in old Bisbee, there's a need for housing.
Yeah.
We, you know, would like to have that in some fashion. I don't think there's enough land to. Build a, you know, new housing here. I mean, we are working on another aspect of the, of old Bisbee that we're working on. And it's, this is throughout the entire town, but we have six hundred and seventy-one abandoned homes here. And we are working on trying to, and that's something I work on every day is trying to. Get them onto the, get them to be affordable housing. Right now we're on number two. We are, they're working on number three and four. But that, those are meeting right now because they're not in old Bisbee. They are meeting the zoning code as, as you know it.
But if, if we, if we're encouraging these ADUs. And we follow the existing building code, I think it's restrictive in terms of what it allows. I think there needs to be special dispensations for these ADUs. Whether we're taking a garage, let's say we're taking a garage and we're turning it into a dwelling unit, okay? What if the building code says it has to have a sheer wall? And it, and it doesn't. I mean, there, there's lots of things in the building code that I think are gonna curtail what we're trying to do. And I think Joe needs to be consulted and we need to encourage changes in that building code to make this all happen.
Well, the.
I don't think the building code, it, it's old and it's not, it's not really designed to encourage what we're looking for.
Well, we are, we are in the international building code and we are moving forward on the twenty eighteen adaptation. But you're right, if it needs a sheer wall, it needs, it needs a sheer wall. They, they will have to. Take that wall apart and, you know, on the, at least on the inside and, and build a sheer wall. So you're right, just like the, the sewer aspect, if the sewer doesn't meet code, the building won't get built. If the, if the garage needs a sheer wall, this will not get built. And you're right, so that, I don't know what, what we.
So we're, we're, we're not encouraging the guy that has the garage and, I mean, he can, he could put this sheer wall on the interior and save a whole lot of money. But, and I'm not familiar enough with the building code to know exactly what the intricacies of it are. But I wanna make sure that that building code encourages these ADUs. And I don't know if it does now. But as a ten foot setback, it's not gonna encourage some options for ADUs.
Well, that would be our zoning, our zoning code. But the building code is, we have the same building code here that they have in Texas or Missouri or Michigan. It's the international building code. But, and that wouldn't affect setbacks, but you're right, if, if a sheer wall is required or. The only difference is some areas have hurricane strapping and, you know, earthquake proof, this and that. We don't have that, so it'd be a little, little different, but if we don't meet the code as interpreted by Mr. Ward. Then you're right, this wouldn't be able to be built.
I'm just wondering if it's gonna be a roadblock to what we're trying to do.
I don't know. I, it's a good point. I don't know.
John, it, it's, it shouldn't be a roadblock. I don't think any one of us here wants these ADUs to be substandard housing. I think we want all of these things to be, you know, upright housing. And, and to meet code. We don't want houses built out of bamboo poles and cardboard.
I would never suggest that. I was saying that maybe we need to have some dispensations for ADUs that. Still maintain good housing and solid co- housing stock, but maybe they don't require a, a, a ten foot setback. Well, it's an ADU. It's, it's designed to put, it's, it's designed to infill the housing stock in old Bisbee and in places like it. And it may be some special tweaking of the, of the code could be arranged so that it makes that easier. And expedite the whole ADU process.
Well, if I have a house. If I have a house, I bought a house here with the understanding. That the neighbors had a ten foot setback and I had a ten set, oh, ten foot setback. I'd be very irritated if they were able to build an ADU unit right on the property line, ten feet from my house. So the ADUs is, I've got to follow the same. Guidelines and zoning requirements that we have for everything else.
And I agree, the zoning regulations are there to protect. The, the residents of all the surrounding properties, including the property, the subject property. I really, if there's a ten foot setback, I really believe in that being. You know, whatever the setbacks, we should follow that because otherwise it's encroaching on the open space between two units or two neighbors. But also, there's a reason for it and, you know, maybe that people should change the zoning. You know, or, or apply to change the zoning for that, but I do think that the, the building code. And fire code and electrical code, all those are really important. And I don't think we should, even if they're building it within the primary residence. Let's say they take two old bedrooms and make them into an apartment. It shouldn't be just, you know, you lock a door and that's your apartment. I, I really think it should be built as though it were a separate residence. That means an exterior means of egress and probably in, depending on the case, two exterior means of egress. Setbacks that are appropriate. So I, I don't want, you know, if the, if this were to. I wouldn't support it if it were to, to modify the, the zoning setbacks, building height, things like that. I would, I wouldn't want it to, to exist because it would cause, in my mind, more turmoil than. Then the idea, and I do agree with you that the idea of having ADUs. Is something that should be considered. I'd rather see a tax break. Or a, you know, a. Sewer fees waived or garbage service waived or, you know, to encourage affordable housing. But right now we can't do that, so I, you know, I think that it, it should meet all codes and including the zoning code.
I'm not encouraging unsafe or, or.
No, I know.
High housing. I'm just saying that maybe Joe could audit the building code and see if there are things in there that would be impediments to ADUs.
We could do that. He could, he could do that. It, it's just time and he's, he's short on time.
Yeah, I hear you.
Nancy?
Yeah, so I, you know, I just keep on going back to like my house, like where my house is located on Clausen. And, you know, what? The issues that we have with parking right now, because there's no, no one has parking there. So everyone has to park on the street. And my home actually. Right below the staircase to my house is the only fire hydrant. And so I know that in my backyard, I could easily build one ADU. I know that. I, even if we had ten foot setbacks, I know that there, I have the capability in my yard. But then I think of things like, I mean, I just wanna make, I'm not against anything. I'm just walking it through going. Okay, God forbid, if they're, you know, because I am part of the Firewise program, but God forbid. That somebody up on Tank Hill, you know, is up there smoking a cigarette and, you know, lights a match on the walking path. You know, behind the, where the, where the Iron Man, where the Iron Ice Challenge is. So, you know, you can walk all along up to Laundry Hill that way. So now we have the backside of Tank Hill on fire. And I don't know where there is a fire hydrant. I think there might be one on the curve of High Road. I'm not sure. But I keep on thinking about, how would a fire truck get up there? There's already parking issues there and I can, and, and I, I could build an ADU where I am. So I just think that whatever we're doing. I know that, I know the problem we're trying to solve. I'm just saying, I think that we just need to be thought through with, can the fire department handle it? Is, is there, is there enough? Fire hydrants right now with the amount of homes that are in old Bisbee? Because that's why Spring Canyon went up like a tinderbox. Because the one, and that lost how many homes up there on Spring Canyon a couple of years ago where they had the air and all that paint stuff? Spring Canyon lost all those homes up there because that one fire hydrant didn't work. Or was under pressure or whatever it was. So it's not just from a, a, a housing standpoint, it's from a fire standpoint, it's from the, how do we, how do we enforce this? That's where I, my, you know, it just, it just one things leads to another, but we. You know, we don't definitely want anybody dying in a fire or. Their structure burning down with people in it because the fire department can't get to it or there's not an appropriate. Hydrant. And, and, and again, you know, I don't wanna make a sweeping comment about the entire zip code of eight, five, six, zero, three. But it seems like a lot of the things that we talked about, it's such a different animal when we're talking about old Bisbee. It's just completely different.
And I am. Always charge, you could always charge impact fees that would help us, we lay the cost of extra sewage treatment. And maybe those impact fees could be applied to fire prevention too. So you could levy. And something as simple as an impact fee. If someone has increased the, had the population in their unit. Then it has an impact and so we can charge a fee for it.
Right. So that fee will, in my experience, that fee will not be. Will be passed on to the person who maybe, you know, if the landlord, if, if, if I rented out my ADU and I had an impact fee. I can tell you that I'm passing that on to my tenant.
And then that, when there's a fire, that tenant will be safe. Because that, that fee went for that fire hydrant.
But then it becomes unaffordable housing again when I was gonna charge whatever we're, whatever we're talking about here for affordable housing. You know, in twenty twenty one, I don't know what affordable housing is, but let's just say it's six fifty or so, so let's just say that. And then you have an impact fee on top of that. Then it gets up to eight or nine or a thousand dollars and that's what people are already saying that they can't afford it. So that's why I, again, I just wanna be thought through on everything because what we're doing, we're just, we're setting precedent. And we can, we can cancel it after five years or we can do whatever, but how do we? How do we monitor or regulate what we're suggesting?
And, and just FYI, the affordable housing is thirty percent of the income of the, of the person seeking the housing. So if they're making fifteen hundred a month, that would be five hundred and that includes taxes and other fees. That's a, a HUD definition.
Gotcha. But I, and then the other thing is, you know, when my parents came out three years ago. My father is eighty-five, my mother is eighty-two, well, was eighty-two. I took them down to Contessa's in the wintertime. My mother had a problem with her heart. And they, you know, they have to climb forty-six steps to get to my mother and I'm just saying thank God she made it that time. But it's also, if we're having all of these structures all around, we're, you know, the average age in Bisbee is not twenty-seven. So, you know, people are living in there. I know it was quite an issue. It was around Thanksgiving time and thank God my mom was okay and went to the Copper Queen, but. They had to go up and down forty-six steps in the dead of winter. And find a place to park on Clausen to, to get up there. Which is, you know, I just think about all that stuff because it's, it's real world application in my real life or in my real occupation.
If anybody's familiar with, uh, parliamentary procedure, I call for the question.
We haven't.
That means I, let's vote on it and see where it goes.
Let me finish with other comments and questions. I want to make one suggestion here before we go on and have a vote, and that is just, it's just dealing with form. And it was B two. There's two, actually two separate items addressed in B two. And I was just like terms of form, put that into two different statements. So the one deals with parking, the other deals with, uh, you know, the size of the structure.
Right. Okay.
Which is a simple thing on form.
You're right. Oh, you're right.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move that we, uh, vote on the, we, we vote to approve the, uh, uh, suggestions proposed pertaining, uh, a, a, accessory dwelling units.
Okay. What you're proposing then is this would be brought to us at our next meeting for a public hearing and for recommendation to the city council.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there a second? Let me do a roll call vote here then. John Ballas?
Yes.
Douglas Dunn, yes. Nancy Pirana?
Yes.
Uh, Ginger Ryan?
Yes.
Michael Spitzer?
Yes.
Okay. I guess unanimous then. So you'll bring it to us and you'll schedule it, uh, as a public hearing. So as we then can acquire additional public input and then pass it on with a recommendation to the city council.
Okay. And if you have any comments, please get them to me if anybody has, uh, suggestions. Nancy, I know you had a lot of, uh, comments and questions. Maybe, uh, we can figure out a way to work that around that.
Yeah, I just, um, I, again, I agree with what we're trying to do. I, and I, I just know that in process, we're gonna, you know, come up against some things. But then if we've already addressed them, maybe we can all just start thinking about how to tackle those issues. And if they never come up, great. And if they come up, then we will have already said, oh, well, we thought that might come up, you know? Thanks Doug. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And John, would you like to have Joe at the next meeting?
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay. I, because you had questions for him. I just thought that'd be prudent.
Okay. Uh, are there in terms of a, are there any official, any, uh, commissioner comments other than, you know, again, not for discussion, refrain from discussion, but things that you would like to put on the agenda in the future meeting?
Doug, I'd like to be out of order here. Um, I was just going to have Doug explain a little bit to us. Uh, our last meeting, we were at a stalemate on one hundred Clausen Avenue. And the city council went ahead and voted on it and approved it without any recommendation from the PNZ board. I was, I got a little bit of an explanation from lineup. I think probably the whole group needs to have an explanation on how that went down.
Sure. Um, the, um, county, um, of course was disappointed with the vote. Um, a tie vote is a negative vote. It's, it's, you know, the, and I hadn't even remembered that in the, you know, in the, um, um, course of, you know, the fray, I, I tend to forget things. So I didn't even remember that the tie vote would be a negative vote. But, uh, the county asked that the, uh, the city attorney, uh, look at that vote. And because it was a negative vote, that means that the, um, planning and zoning commission, uh, passed on it. And it could go, it, your, your vote is a recommendation to the council. And so the county asked that it go to the council and I had to present it to the council.
And I could comment that they had a second reading Tuesday night. So, uh, it has been a voted on by council twice and approved. So.
Right.
Not my favorite. For further consideration, uh, Mr. Taylor has talked about the queue, uh, for the, uh, auctions of, uh, city property that were held kind of in abeyance during the COVID. Maybe get an update on that?
Well, the, uh, the idea is to, uh, it was to, uh, bring them before council when the, uh, meetings were in person. And, um, they are in person now. I don't know, but that's sort of above my pay grade, but I am ready to present when, when asked. And I understand there's several, there's quite a few, uh, properties in that. Either the queue, I call it the pipeline also, but it's, there's quite a few in there.
So Nina said she would be in charge of that list?
Well, she is in charge of the list, but, um, it's a higher, higher power than me that'll decide when they go before the council.
And, uh, city code two point six point nine. Uh, I've asked about it several times, uh, and, uh, Joe tried to get the law guy in here to talk to us about it, but, uh, uh, I'm not supposed to talk about it. So let's just leave it at, I have concerns about two point six point nine and what duties it assigns to the planning and zoning.
Okay. I don't know what those are exactly, but I will, I will.
You have some, there, there's some intrigue, you got some suspense.
Okay, good. I, I, I love a mystery story. Maybe you would like to come and see me and, and.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk about it. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Other comments from commissioners as to future agenda items?
What? What they were talking about in terms of the city fixing up properties, there's that whole list of condemned properties. We talked about it before. But, um, I would like to get an update on the uninhabitable structures and what's going on with them, please.
Okay. And, and currently, uh, there are several that have been posted. I don't know, this is before my tenure, but they, I don't know why, but they've had, from my understanding, several of them have had extensions. Um, I just haven't gotten around to that portion of, uh, my job yet to see why that is. But they've been given ninety days or, or something in that neighborhood to, uh, start to comply. Those are, most of those are, uh, nuisance, um, um, properties that, that are in that list. Um, there are properties that I feel, and they haven't gone on the list yet. Um, but there are properties that I feel are a hazard to neighbors uh, and to the city, uh, because of either fire or, uh, vandals or, uh, vagrancy, which, and, and drug use, which three, two of those four, I believe, need our attention also from a, they need help. The vagrant people, the homeless people and the, the drug addicted people. But they do use these houses as places to, as windbreaks, I think. And we have to either get them secured and get the yards cleaned because of the fire nature of it. And some of them, if you, uh, there's one at the top of, um, of Youngblood Hill on the stairs to the left of Mimosa, uh, that goes up, it's only accessible by stair that has no roof. And it's, you know, just bare. It looks like something you'd find on a beach in an old, uh, uh, pirate, uh, movie. But, uh, it's just not, it's not in kind of shape. Now, some of those are owned by corporations that invest in tax lien properties. And I'm trying to get, you know, trying to get my head above water to start dealing with those corporations because if they're making money off these and not improving the property or just securing it and cleaning the, the premises, there's a problem. If they belong to some, uh, family that, that hit hard times, I, I'm not trying to do anything that would hurt them. But we do have to have these houses safe. I do believe there are entities within the city, uh, within the city, not the government, but that, that can help board up a, a property or, uh, you know, make repairs so that the people can come back in, that sort of thing. And I believe the city at some point has to, and we, I, and again, I will say, I haven't had a chance to get to this yet. But the city can, we have in our statutes, the city can go in, clean the property, secure it and charge back the owners. And if that's a corporation that's investing it, I'm really happy they're, they're helping us.
Other comments? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Go move.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Hello, Louis.
Hello.
I was at the city council meeting Tuesday and you weren't there.
That's because I was always exposed to COVID and I had to get a test, so I couldn't get any of you people fit.
Well, I'm glad you're good then.
Thank you.
Thank you. That does it.
Have a good night.
Take care, you guys.
Have a good Thanksgiving.